All right, well, might as well get started here, go through the minutes and get moving along here. All right. So there we go. Well, we got six oh six. So this is the opening of the town of Rutland zoning board of appeals meeting for August seventh, six P M. Tamika, you're the secretary. Jake is, this is Jacob Morris, Bob Paulson, Butch Nato, I'm Chris Sankel. We also have the Zoom that nobody is on. That's good. We got that going for us. And the first thing on the agenda tonight is the acceptance of the meeting minutes of July tenth. Did you guys look at any of that stuff?
I thought they looked good.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
All right, make, Bob made a motion, Butch seconded. I got, if there's any discussion, I've got some discussion. On the second page in the second paragraph, the main paragraph, hit Tamika. It's the one, two, three, four, sixth line down, which says, "The board agreed that there wasn't anything further that could be done." But is the word should or could appropriate there? I thought we kind of agreed not to take it any further, that we didn't feel there was really any need for that. Yeah, no, you might be looking up for us.
You can change it, yes.
But I just want your opinion on that. And then, as that sentence continues, anything could, should be done, be done to mitigate noise or fumes. Nothing that the property is located on a, is it, should that, nothing, the first word in the next line, should that be noting?
Noting, it was, yeah, that was the grammar area.
Clarible thing, yep, okay. So I'm kind of game for whatever.
I like should.
Should, okay.
Guys, good with that, I can change that, should. And then, continue on the next line down after noting. I'm just not sure again this one. "But the board did not feel it was a major concern and efforts to reduce those issues have been proposed." So that's, the next sentence seems a little...
So I think what I was referring to is when Patrick was talking about how they're gonna do the plantings along the property line to try to reduce, you know, noise mitigation essentially on that side. But if you think it's confusing, I can...
Okay, have that proposed into, and more enough, okay, gotcha, I understand. Okay, yep, all right, so other than that, I have nothing else. All right, any other discussion?
No. So vote to accept the minutes with the change.
Changes.
Changes we just discussed.
That we just amended, yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any ayes, hearing none, that's unanimous. Meeting minutes are done. Next up on the agenda, excuse me, next up on the agenda is the public hearing, or the continuance of the public hearing of Branded Realty Group, the second LLC Dunkin' Donuts, two fifty-five Main Street. They have an application in for a site plan modification. This has been continued from the July eighth meeting. July eighth or July tenth?
I'm sorry, it should have been the tenth.
July tenth, okay, I'm sorry.
I'm really...
I read it wrong, July tenth. Okay, so, just to kind of recap everything, I think we were getting close on the overall site plan. The engineer, Mr. Healy, was going to, and he did send in the revised plans. Kevin Quinn had done a letter on the plan he had kind of rough drafted, then Kevin did another one, correct? We have multiple things from Kevin?
Yes, so Kevin initially did a response to...
On July sixteenth.
On July sixteenth to the plans that had been submitted previously.
Which were just kind of a rough, rough idea for the last meeting we had in June.
Yes, and then Patrick submitted new revised plans on July twenty-fourth, to which Kevin reviewed those and submitted a letter on July twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth, yep.
And then, also, as mentioned in Kevin's comments, he recommended you seek advice from the building inspector. He reviewed it and provided his memo as well, which I believe his concerns were addressed after that his memo came out.
Correct, so the building department sent something on the twenty-third of July? And then Thompson and Liston responded July twenty-fourth with drawings and a letter?
Correct.
And then Kevin responded the twenty-ninth? Just to get everybody up to speed to the flow of the information here, and those are the drawings on the twenty-ninth?
Yes.
Okay, so, just to go through this, so... I'm not sure, I want to spend a whole ton of time going through Kevin's memo from the sixteenth, unless anybody feels we should. I think, I believe a lot of his items in this were cleaned up in the drawings that, you know, again, Kevin not being at the meetings didn't really understand that that was a rough draft, and I had spoken to Kevin about that, so he sent that anyways just to address it. But then, the building inspector's concern, so unless you want to go through this memo in detail, I'll just, we'll just go to Kevin's memo of the twenty-ninth, because that's the one that really is based on the drawings that were submitted the twenty-fourth. So just from a time perspective here, I don't want to speak about it twice, you know?
The one where he says, what was resolved, things that were resolved?
Yeah, yeah, just kind of get to the final end. Again, the engineer addressed a lot of those concerns, and then Kevin kind of recaps in the twenty-ninth, so I don't feel we're gonna spend a whole ton of time on that sixteenth memo. But the twenty-third, we received the zoning, from the building department. Part review and Quinn Engineering synopsis, I have no issue with items one through twelve, not the exception of item three and six. He talks about parking spaces, calculation indicates twenty-three, however, there's only twenty-one, which I believe that was squared away with on the resubmission of the plans and from Thompson and Liston. And then the van accessible parking space, more than three spaces from the accessible entrance. So we'll discuss that really briefly with the engineer. Welcome, Mr. Healy, how are you?
Good evening, sir, how are you?
Good, good, good to see you, thank you for getting here, and I don't think you've missed a thing. We just went over some meeting notes and just been kind of refreshing ourselves and everything here. Seeing that you're here, so, the building inspector had sent a memo about the parking spaces and the handicap spaces. Would you just like to recap that so that issue can be wrapped up here?
Yes, so there was a typo on our plan, we've corrected that to reflect the actual number on the plan. So I think there was a misunderstanding, first of all, about what was required and provided, so I think we've clarified that.
Correct.
So it's now noting that there are eleven required spaces, we're providing twenty-three. And there was one accessible space required, we're providing one accessible space. It is van accessible, and Mr. Quinn confirmed that.
Mr. Quinn confirms that in his memo on the twenty-ninth, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, did the building inspector have anything else to say?
No, no, he left it up to you guys once you continued your conversation.
Okay, so, all right. So I don't think there's really any need to go into that anymore, right? All right.
I think a couple of the issues that he mentioned, we had already discussed at length at the last meeting, so...
Correct.
If you're of the same mind, then I don't think there's anything else we need to talk about. With the signage, the crosswalks, things like that, I think we've addressed all of your comments, we've addressed Mr. Quinn's comments. And I don't know what else might be outstanding. So we did meet with the conservation commission last night, the commission closed its hearing, they'll be issuing an order of conditions.
Again, just to go through Mr. Quinn's memo here, everything kind of just closes out. Excuse me. So, to Mr. Healy's point, do we want to go through any item on Kevin Quinn's report? On the date on the twenty-ninth, just to run through real quick. The parking spaces, grid slopes, if you have, that's all set, no further comment. Retaining walls are called out, no western east plan with the side setback, understood that the building inspector has issued comment, but that's been resolved. Twenty-one parking spaces, that's, that's fine, that's resolved. Signs are called out on the plan to wonder pedestrians, so that's there. Pedestrian walk's been added. Parking spaces, handicap accessible, that all meets C M R twenty-three point six. Again, we haven't heard anything back from the building inspector, I think we're all set there. The accessible parking space van for the elevation slope requirements, good spot grades, limitations for the ADA standards, that's resolved. Number eight, not even sure what that was, but it refers to comment six, C six, so that's, again, that's part of the...
It was requiring the signage in accordance with the regulations.
Yep, you've got that on the plan. Plans called for guide rail and fence, item number nine, second page of Kevin's memo. Plans called for guide rail and fence to be installed, retaining walls at the top of the bank with slope requirements to master bounds. That's resolved, we think we went through that last plan too, last meeting, so that's, that's up to snuff. Item ten, the curb ramps and existing sidewalk have been detailed to ensure ADA compliance. Tactile pads are in there in each crossing ramp, so that issue's, no, that's all set. And the signage has been reflected, current traffic patterns, that's all set. Stormwater and hydrology, the retainer stormwater chamber structure should be detailed to clarify and provide the following. Manways are called out, concrete pad below the inlet in the chamber structure. And as I understand it, you've got the conservation, everything's all set with conservation last night?
Yes, sir.
So they reviewed all that?
Yes, there's one minor typo we need to correct on our stormwater report, but I think all of the issues have been addressed.
So, I'm not trying to go too fast, but does anyone have any questions or comments on Quinn Engineering memo of the twenty-nine?
So, so the twenty-three parking spaces, so the twenty-one he's mentioned here is what? He mentions twenty-one, but he said it's twenty-three. All right, so, number three, it says resolved, but is it resolved?
I think Patrick said there was a typo.
There's a typo on the original plan.
There was, okay, so...
Eleven are required.
Right, right, but there's twenty-three is what he...
I'm sorry, twenty-one.
Twenty-one on the plan, you had twenty-three in the plan.
We had the number twenty-three, but when we changed to the angled parking, we went from twenty-three to twenty-one, and that hadn't been changed on the table.
So we're ten over, for the record.
There's plenty to meet the needs of the zoning requirements and the client's needs.
So... Just a couple of things that I had after reviewing the plan, Mr. Healy, does anybody have any questions or anything else for the applicants or the engineer, everyone's engineer? Okay, I just got a few quick questions I'd just like to run through with you, if we could. On the photometric plan, I was wondering if you could just make a change on the two parking lot poles that are along the abutter on, which would be the western side, I believe, of the property. The gentleman that was here at the last meeting, Mr. Healy, I mean, if you could just change those to like full cutoff lights, they're like a fifteen dollar shield on each light, and that would keep the photometric, I mean, he was concerned about, you know, the noise and the fumes and the light and everything spilling over onto his property. And I believe it's your drawing, C six one, and you've got some light spilling outside the, looks to be the lot line, along that wall, the edge there. And...
Yes, we can add shields.
You know, see those two along that driveway line? They could just make that change, I think that would, you know, do what we can, it's a minor change, it's thirty dollars, I don't think...
Are you willing to make that a condition of a...
I think we can make that a condition, yeah, I'm not, I'm not trying to, yep, yep. Put up on the lights there, the, on the signage, I saw the details in Kevin's note on the signage. So you showed, I had these little plans, Patrick, so I couldn't really see any of the signs, but they're all placed on there, correct? For the cars and everything, I didn't really, couldn't see any small ones. I mean, Kevin said he's all set, so I'm assuming we're all set. The details look great in the last drawing, you had all the signage you'd want for the pedestrians and for the car traffic.
Yes, I could, I could show that to the board if you feel like...
Just point them out real quick, I mean, by the walkways, right, I just didn't see, what drawing are you on there?
So if I look at, C two is the site plan.
C two, yep, yep, okay.
Here, as you drive in here, we have a sign on each side.
Okay.
For the motors to watch for the pedestrians. We have the striped crosswalk.
Okay.
And then when you come around this way, there's one here mounted, it's hard to place one on the right side because of the parking, but there's one on this island on the left side.
Okay, yep.
Same sign, pedestrian crossing. And then there's a sign called out on the other sheet for the pedestrians at both ends to watch where they're stepping into the lane to watch for vehicles coming from the right, most cases.
All right, terrific, while you're there, real quick, we have that plan. The only, the only other thing I thought about now, thank you, so that takes care of that, thank you. You know when you're coming up the drive-through on that plan there? You've got drive-through at the, down at the very base, just after the crosswalk? Is there any signage directed people that the left lane is the drive-through? Because once, you're gonna be by that so quick. Like what, is there any, is there any, do you have any like little, like signs, like, you know how sometimes they have like little three-foot stand-up signs? Like what dictates people the drive-throughs to the left there, as they're coming up the double barrel?
I think experience coming through the...
Common sense.
After your first time there, you'll figure out.
Be comfortable with common sense?
We get a lot of repeat customers coming through.
I know. Common sense is not as common as we, I'm just, I don't know if you just want to, should we put another drive-through like up the thing? I'm not trying to be anal, but I'm just trying to make sure we do all we can for...
I mean, you have to be in that lane in order to get there, to get to the border screen.
Hey, just real quick, the entry width of the roadway, that's twenty-four feet, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Yep, and that's pretty much the same as the existing one right now, Patrick, right? The entrance and exit right now, that's...
Give or take a foot.
Give or take a foot, all right, yeah, so that's, that's pretty good, okay.
So proposing a twenty-four, that's, the mass DOT is not gonna give us a wider, wider cut? Twenty-four, wider drive than twenty-four feet, yep.
One other question, the employee parking we talked about in the back, I didn't see a sign that designated those six or eight spaces. Is that sign on the plan, Patrick? Again, I had a small set, you might have had it.
It's not on the sign, Mr. Chairman.
So we can make that as a quick little amendment, too?
Generally, well, we open early, so those spaces are full before customers come. So we typically don't put signage on those, I mean, we can, if it's important to the board, certainly we can.
It was just to direct the flow of people to an area where the pedestrian traffic was safest. You know, that, your engineer was, it was nice to add that lower one, so we're gonna put the people in the top left corner there.
So he wants the employees to be around these spaces, which are most distant.
If you could just add that sign, that'd be, that'd be nice, you know, in that area, you know? Just one sign to the left, like to the corner, you know what I'm saying? We talked about that, full cutoff, right away. And not to bring up, not to be a revisionist, I don't know where I saw it, but are we sure there's no right-of-way there? Did we see something in writing that there's no right-of-way on that deed? Do you have any written proof? Because I thought Dick Williams had something that there was a right-of-way there, he had some proof of something in that very first meeting.
We acquired that property in December, and we did full title run on it, there's nothing, and the people, we acquired it from people who built the store, had gone through all that with one of the abutters.
So, excuse me if I may, did, are you the company that built that Dunkin' Donuts?
Yeah, we own the property now, we just bought it in December. We operated the store, we purchased the store from the landowner, we built it, and we were a tenant there for twenty years.
Okay, so you were the original tenant of Dunkin' Donuts there?
Second tenant, the landowner built the store, we bought the store from them.
I got you, okay, all right.
And then we bought the property in December, after about twenty years.
Got you, okay, so, all right, I mean, I just want to make sure, I haven't really seen any written proof, you know, they're gonna bury that right-of-way there, pretty much, right? There's no access, is that correct, Mr. Healy?
There's only one way to build this site, and it's starting at the bottom and building up toward the top.
So when you go down that little fairview, there's that little, you know...
Yeah, that was permissive use to allow the neighbor to park cars there. And I know there was, we had seen things in writing, there was certified letters, hey, we're letting you do this. Because I think there was, that person had raised the issue, and we didn't find anything, because we knew about it before we bought the property. So we had done a full title on it, there was nothing there.
So, I'll just, Jacob, I'll turn to you, from a legality standpoint, do you feel there's anything we need to protect ourselves if, you know...
If there's a right-of-way, it'd have to be, it would be on the deed.
It would be in the chain of title.
Yeah.
And you're stating for the record, that's not on it?
We didn't find it.
You just document that, Tamika, and is that fair enough, is that good enough for everybody here? He's written, and just, what's your name, sir?
My name is Robert Branca.
Okay. I don't have anything else, I have a little detailed, anal notes. Anything else, anybody, any other questions or concerns?
So there's gonna be two conditions, lighting issue and the employee parking sign?
Lighting shield and employee parking sign. On those two poles.
Correct, just the two poles, yeah, that's all.
Do you think those poles have any sort of name or number on the plan that can be referenced?
P one, yep, the blue mark. That's the fixture type. I think there's more than just that one P one on that.
The Westerly Lot P line?
Correct, that would be on the Westerly Lot Line, yep, the two poles, the two P one pole lights on the Westerly Lot Line.
Yes, that's very clear.
Anything else for the board here that we want to discuss, or bring up to the applicants, guys all good? Gentlemen, you have anything else for us at this point?
No, just appreciate doing business in the town, we've been here twenty years, love it, love the people here. Think this will be better for them, be safer for pedestrians, and allow us to be more efficient with operations and serve the community better.
I think it'll work well.
I do, too.
Yeah, it's a tough site, you know, it's not the ideal way to build them if it was brand new, but it is what it is, and we're just trying to make the best of what we can with it, so, we appreciate your efforts as well. I know, kind of, had to go through a few renditions there, Mr. Healy.
Happy to make, happy to make the board happy.
How long are we gonna be closed for, Dunkin' Construction?
Hopefully not very long at all.
He's struggling right now with the other two places that are closed.
People need their caffeine. I know I do.
So a lot of the site work, Mr. Chair, can be conducted while the store's open, because we really need to build that fill-up and create that platform so we can sort of navigate the traffic around the building footprint without it being constructed. And the addition itself can actually be constructed while the front of the store's operating. So they're gonna, they're, I'm sure, in the, in their interest, they'll keep the number of days...
We've done it a lot of times, try to minimize closures and stage construction. Obviously, it's gonna be safe, but, but this shouldn't be that much of a challenge.
So that's a real good point, and that's something maybe we should just talk about real quick, is just the methodology and the plan of the construction. Just from a, from a, again, the workers and the people, I mean, you don't want the workers getting run over by the crazy people with their caffeine.
Distraction drivers.
It's not safe sometimes, so when you fill that, are you just gonna fill it coming off and coming in from the backside? From the bottom up, right? You're not just gonna be working that from the top down?
So it won't, it shouldn't affect...
Shouldn't feel that, okay.
Right now, it's grade separated between the drive-through and the lower curb cut, so that other curb cut would be used for construction, for hauling material in. It's completely separate from the operation of the...
Okay, so you're gonna use that, that new entrance curb cut to access the construction zone and bring fill in that way?
That's the intent, yes.
All right, so that keeps your drive-through going?
It keeps the traffic off of Fairview Lane, which is, you know, very narrow. So we don't want to be putting trucks going down that narrow, steep lane.
And trying to make that corner, and at some point, the corner's gonna get filled in.
Yeah, initially, when they move in to mobilize, they'll have to go in that way until they can clear the path and get the construction entrances in place. But as I said, there's really only one way to build this, and that's from the bottom, you know, starting with the fill in the, in the stormwater system and coming up to the final grade.
Okay, so, and that, is that paved right now?
Just the driveway, flare is paved, there will be a construct, construction site stabilized.
Little bit of rack, exactly, a little rip rap right there to clean off the trucks and whatnot coming on.
There's rain and...
It's on our plan.
That's on your plan, great.
Approved by the conservation.
Okay, is there any concern about that neighbor right there, that fence and that thing won't be up while the construction's going? Just be, tell the guys to be nice, I don't know what else to say.
It would behoove us to put up, but...
A construction fence or something, a safety fence, just to keep that, that a buddy neighbor has some concerns, he was here at the last meeting, you didn't, you might not have heard or known us.
My partner was here, yeah.
Yeah, so, he's very, you know, the fumes and the dust, you know, that's gonna be a problem, so just try to be as neighborly as you can.
Can, and when we took down the other building, we were, and there was no problem.
Good, good, well, good point, good, so I think you fill that out. Now, the only other question, explain to me like the temporary drive-through, because when you're putting that addition on that's going right where the kiosk is right now that you order, correct?
Yeah, well...
That's gonna have to move, how would people order? Are you open during that timeframe, or are you closed during that timeframe? I mean, I know the one down in Worcester Tactic, they just shut that thing down and just totally redid that.
Well, we had to basically rebuild the building because there were structural issues with some of the walls, yeah. And like I said, we aim not to close, but if it's a safety issue, we'll close.
I'm just trying to feel like, you know, like what's the plan behind it, so that if there's anything we should know about just as an order or condition or anything like that?
We'll speak to the police chief, like, well, if we need to close traffic.
We just don't want to see traffic backed up because, you know, someone's on a, you know, the walkway.
We don't want that either, because it sets the gas, and you don't come back.
Do you put a temporary drive, like a temporary kiosk in, is that what you do when you do these like that?
We wouldn't do that.
No, the intent is to keep, to maintain that loop road while we bring all this fill up to grade. Once it's up to grade and we can extend that out, they probably will put a temporary menu in, so they can build the building addition.
You gotta build the building where that menu is, menu board now is.
And then they can time that, so it's not, it's after the peak morning hour when they're doing that operation. They don't want to affect their business traffic flow either.
We can do it at night, and we've got a lot of people ordering on their phones now, so less people use that menu board than ever. And if we have to go to mobile order only, we'll do it.
What's the estimated start in the fall, what are you thinking?
Well, we wanted to wait till we got approval before we print anything.
You're ready, no, pretty much?
Yeah, wanted permission, not forgiveness.
So I imagine, Rob, you'll, you'll take your contractor that's working at Tannen Square and come up here.
That's, that's the plan, it's the same people.
The intent is to start in the fall.
And my partner, Matt, runs our construction business, so we'll be in charge of everything. The operators will, will be responsible, you know who we are.
Does the board feel that there should be any order or condition that that entrance will be the access for the fill, like noted in this hearing? And/or a temporary drive-through, or the, you know, the applicant has to make, you know, not create a traffic problem due to, you know, the menu board being down? Is there any issues anybody kept a concern with that, or just let them deal with it on their own? If that's a safety thing, are you, you know, any issue with that?
I think they, they're required to deal with it on their own.
Fair enough.
We have brand standards, we have to answer to Dunkin', and mostly our customers, right?
Liability, I mean, they have to look out for their own.
Right, our insurance company and...
Okay, all right, anything else, anybody else? No good? All right, so, do we have a motion, are we ready to vote on this, basically, before we...
Chris, we just have to close the hearing first.
Thank you, okay. So, at this time, we'll close the public hearing for the application for site plan modification for two fifty-five Main Street, Branded Realty Group, Dunkin' Donuts.
I need a mo, I need a motion for that.
And do I have a motion for that?
I'll make it.
Bob, seconded? Butch seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any ayes, hearing none, that's unanimous, hearing's closed.
There was no public comment.
No, no, no public comment, yeah, we had enough of that. Thank you, and now, motion to, to vote. So, make a motion to vote on the site plan approval with the two order of conditions. As these plans dated seven twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with conditions, what's the rest of my motion?
The site pole modifications, site led modifications, and the employee parking sign.
So are we gonna...
Jake, if you want, you could just say, "As discussed," so you could say, "Motion to grant site plan approval with two conditions as discussed based on the site plan stated July twenty-fourth."
So I'll move to grant, to vote on granting the site plan approval with the two conditions as previously discussed.
All right, you have a second?
Yeah, sure.
Bob, okay, seconded, all right, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Aye, any ayes? Aye, any days, hearing none?
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck and good fortune.
Looking forward to it.
When's it going to start?
Yeah, now you're, now you're.
Tomorrow, tomorrow.
Got to finish Tattnick first and then move, and then move up.
That's moving along, I go by there every day.
Probably after Labor Day, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Completely scarred, now I know why.
Yeah, it's all the, the I VAC is up, and, and I think the roof is on there.
Yeah, floor's poor, diplomas right now.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good evening. So are they changing this, getting, getting in and out of there or?
Not really, I mean, that, that drive-through still is maxed out, because it goes around the front row a lot. But like the other gentleman said, they put the addition on so they can store more crap, more goods there, the truck doesn't have to go there as much.
When was the last time you went to Shrewsbury?
Um, last Wednesday.
Did you go see the Dunkin' Donuts up there?
I didn't go through the center.
But when you do, next time you go out there, drive by, it's almost like what they're doing here.
Yeah.
It's the center of Shrewsbury?
It's, uh, center of Shrewsbury.
Where's the Dunkin' in the center of?
Well, it's, it's, it's across, it's right by the mobile station. Next to the, um, seven eleven.
Oh, yeah, further down that way.
Yeah, so you come in, they do that, you got to go this way, this way, and then there's a stop, it's.
The Paxton is nice, because, you know, you just loop right around the outside, even Tattnick's not bad. I mean, it's, the lot's as big as it is, so you can only get so many cars, and then the parking is all up against the building, so pedestrians never going through the drive-through. This one, it's kind of the opposite.
Yeah, Paxton probably gets ten cars in that loop, huh? I mean, that's what they look and do.
Yeah, some mornings, that's backed out to the road, too.
No, no, but that, but having ten cars in the queue is probably
I think they get more, it looks like they get more.
Yeah. Yeah.
Chris, if you'd like, um, if the board is amenable, I can draft a decision and send it to you guys, so that you can review it and make any comments. And then once it's okay, I'll put on the electronic signatures, get it clocked in, and start that twenty-day appeal period.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you okay with that?
That's unanimous, no doubt there. Thank you very much to Mika, that's great, thank you, yeah.
I'll use the, um, prior site plan approval a, as a template of, you know, what they had included, and then, of course, you guys can add any thickness you feel is appropriate.
That'd be terrific, thank you very much. Um, awesome, so, any other business, to Mika?
No, nothing.
Nothing on the horizon?
Nothing on the horizon. I'm going to give you a little break after this.
Enjoy the rest of the summer?
Yeah.
That time, he spends all day making notes anyway.
Trust me, I was like scrambling, still like twenty minutes, fifteen minutes, I'm going to do this thing, like, barely got here on time, I got a big meeting. All right, um, so, just a motion to close this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
I don't say.
Yeah, there was no discussion.